Okay, so let's get started. Thank you all for joining in. This is our weekday podcast. And we talk about different topics and lately we have been talking about the coronavirus and the impacts to small business and how exactly the stimulus package will enable certain set of features, functions. What can you leverage for your business? And specifically, there's a very important deadline tomorrow. Not a deadline, it's actually the very first day you can file applications for the payroll loans that are currently being provided. And and there are lots of different opportunities for for companies. Whether you are in the in a small media business or an established enterprise, there's an opportunity for you to leverage the offering from the $2.3 trillion stimulus package. So what we'll do is we'll dig into some of the details. This is actually the second webinar we are doing on this topic, the second town hall meeting. Yesterday, we had a much higher number who participated. And today we have a smaller number, but we we have a very experienced chartered accountant in Sanjeev Gupta. And he'll basically walk through this deck that you see on the screen. And it covers provides you a broad overview in terms of how exactly this stimulus package has been structured and some of the different options. And obviously, it's very hard to dig into the details. But we'll try to cover the details in the Q and A. The Q and A will do a double click on many aspects of what will be presented now. So with that, I'm very honored to have Sanjeev. So Sanjeev, I can see your deck, please introduce yourself. And let's get this going. Thank you for joining. Thank you all for taking the time. Sanjeev, you're on mute, so please unmute yourself and you can get going.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, Rishi. For providing me opportunity to talk about COVID-19 attacks related matters and other matter which are important for business owners. And thank you everyone for joining and having your time, precious time to join me and see my presentation and talk about which is about upcoming. Like I said, the loans programs and other things which are available. And it's very confusing because a lot of details are there and a lot of I see literature on internet and and Google and everywhere. But the confusion is about there's not much clarity on the things. And so my goal today will be to present in a in a in a small and precise manner. The the things that all business owners want to know and how to apply for this kind of loans and what are differences in in those loans. And if you have any questions, definitely I can take those questions. My firm is has four offices in Fremont, Sunnyvale, San Jose, Placenton. We have a staff of 25 people. We virtually working from home, as everyone knows, we are working office. We are business services because we have a requirement for for running payroll and doing payroll, doing the tax on like people need money from they have to file the taxes, the stimulus check payment is due. So we still try to maintain the social distancing and I hope everybody is doing the same and staying healthy and staying safe. So yes, so let's, Rishi, can I start the presentation?
Absolutely, please go ahead.
So just just to make a note, this information is only for general information. Of course, it does not constitute constitute tax accounting advice to any person or entity. So it is important that if you want more details or more specific requirement, you definitely need to consult your tax professionals and take it from there. So first thing is about the tax filing deadlines which we we know all about, which are which are there like tax filing deadline, which is following on April 15th, has been extended to July 15th. So anything that is happening on April 15th extended to July 15th. So not only the tax filing for income tax federal and state, but also IRA contributions. So if you have any IRA contributions which are due, like traditional IRA contribution is due on April 15th. You can do till you can do till July 15th. Sapphire contributions is saved way saved is extended to July 15th. Of course, if you want extension, if you're not ready by July 15th for your business, definitely you can file for extension and can get additional two months of extension is September 15th and October 15th. Now, if you are S Corporation LLCs, the deadline was March 15th. It's not April 15th, as everyone knows, April 15th is only for user tax filers and C corporations. So those have been extended to July 15th. S Corporation LLCs are not extended. So if you are those people who are not file extension, you will subject to penalties. The debt, the debt and the date for filing the S Corporation LLC with the extension is September 15th, 2020. So there's no more extension on that one. Like for C corporation, of course, like I said, is shifted to July 15th. And you can apply for two months and go to up to October 15th. Contribution like I said is is extended same way. July 15th, state income taxes is due to July 15th. Sales tax, if you are a business owner, where sales tax, it will it has extended till July 15th. The property tax payment is not extended unfortunately, but there are ways county has provided, if they are not, you know, they are not working, that means maybe you can find ways to lower it to to defer it somehow. But counties have not come, I've not found any literature or any when I call the county, I did not find anything that they have postponed. They're postponing the property tax payments. But other things, the sales tax return is deferred by 60 days. Payroll tax, payroll for federal and the state, which is due like the first quarter ending due, there's a federal payroll tax payment is also deferred. The state payroll taxes is also deferred. You can ask for F, you can go to ftb.ca.gov and file for differentment of for payroll taxes and for IRS, for federally can go to IRS.gov and ask for the differentment. So those things are important to note as a business owner, because you have questions on differentment and what things are deferred, not deferred. So we should make note of it. Now coming to the business tax provisions of the the CARE Act and the and the primary first coronavirus relief act. Selling futures of those taxes which are affecting businesses are the losses arising in 2018, 19 and 2020. So there will be a lot of businesses who might have suffered, will suffer losses in 2020 because of slowdown or what, when this pandemic will be settled down, settled and there will be losses in the businesses. So when you have those losses, you can use that loss, you can set and carry it back five years. And so you can amend the return for five in for those years where you made a lot of money. Or you can file file this form 1045, which you for application for tentative refund with your with your tax return for 2020 when it's due. So very important provision losses can be carried forward. Not only for 2020, can be carried forward for 18, it can be carried forward for 2019. It happened similarly in 2008 or nine. I don't know how many of you are aware of it, but 2008 or nine, they have the similar provisions. The losses can be carried back. So this is an important change that happened with losses. The other important change happened is they have taken off 80% business loss limitation. So what happened is we are S Corporation LLCs and if you lost this in those corporations. And when they take, when they, when the K1 flows to the personal, if their losses, their losses allowed to set off only 80% of other income. Now they've taken out 80%, now that losses can be used to set up full income coming from W2 and other income, capital gains and other things. So that's important change as well. And other thing, there's a bonus of if you are real estate investors and this is an important change for real estate. If your loss is limited, like in our case, if you have a loss, loss limitation taken off. In this case, if you have a loss, if you're an user tax filer and your schedule C and you are all scheduling, you have rental real estate and your losses from rental real estate, it was kept at $500. $500K, $500,000 loss can be used to set up against a W2 income. Now that has been taken out. So if you have losses from real estate and your active participation and you're managing the real estate, your losses from the real estate, that can be offset, that can offset your total other income. It can be W2 income, interest income, money, any capital gains. So there's a very other change that is hap- that's happened here. So it's a very important things to note about it. Then there's important, their payroll tax delay. So if you, for this year, what you're saying is if you're running payroll, if you're employees and running payroll for employees, the social security Medicaid tax can be deferred, federal social security Medicaid tax can be deferred. And you can pay in two installments for the year. You can pay in two installment, first installment 50% is due by 2021 and second installment 50% is due by 2022. So the IRS is still providing the guidelines. We have not seen on the form 941, any line that says differentment, but it will be there shortly. It it was done earlier, if you recall, in 2011, when President Obama was there, there was differentment of social security tax and other things to tide over these financial difficulties lasting. Same thing is going to happen this this year, but we are waiting for guidelines from the IRS. And important change for for business owners, interest reduction earlier was limited under tax cuts and jobs act, which was passed in 2018, under that act. The interest was, interest expense were limited to 30% of your income. That has increased to 50% and is retrospective effect, means it can go back to 2018 or earlier years, it can go to 2019 and 18. And then important things about qualified improvements. Now, if you are one of those businesses who are running and you've done qualified improvements, whether it's tenant improvement or land or landlord improvement, if you've done any improvement inside the interior of a building, not outside, inside the interior of a building, if you've done any any improvement for a existing business, you have to be a business running, not starting a new business and you're doing the construction. For running business, if you're doing any improvement, qualified improvements, you are allowed bonus depreciation 100%. So earlier it was under tax cuts and jobs act, it was limited to 15-year depreciation because they they took out they took out from the earlier bonus depreciation to 39 years. Now that has been rectified, now this is a big change. So if you have done any qualified improvement inside a building, in any commercial property and you and that can be 100% can be taken out now. If you've done in earlier years, let's say 18, 19, 18, then you can amend those returns and get the money from that. If you pay taxes, it will be refunded. So 18 is, we need to look at 2018 and 2019, if you're not filed it, you can look at it for qualified improvements. If you filed it for 2019, you can do amendments. So qualified improvement change is there. And then there's an important change of employer payroll tax retention credit. Now that is available for if you're maintaining employees for a period of, if you're maintaining employees and you and you keep those employees going, you get a credit. Now this is very confusing and conflicting information. It will take some time to explain to it. If you have any questions on this one, you can connect with me or connect with me to understand this employer retention payroll tax credit. Then there's an important section of 139 payments. Now, a lot of people are working from home, if you're working from home. So you have to set up a home office. You know about home office, but in this case, when there's a requirement like this scenario where you're not going to office, you have employees working from home. So there's one section, 139 payments have been there always, but people are not aware of it. So if you're having an employee set up in a home office, like you have to buy them a furniture, furniture or computers or printers, you can reimburse them for their expenses. And those expenses are not taxable to employees, but deductible for employer. As long as you maintain that for everybody, so not for just few people, for everybody's. So this is important deduction, we should look into section 139 payments. That's applicable only for sole providers, not for business owners. Now coming to the most important area of discussion for today is small business loans. Lot of buzzword is there. We have two types of loans which are given under the CARES Act. One loan is given the CARES Act and one is always exists under SBA guidelines. So first with SBA guidance, the first one is known as economic injury disaster loans, EIDL. In that, the loan is given to cover working capital. Very important to notice, the loan is for working capital, not only for payroll. It can be funny thing, is given at interest rate of 3.75% fixed for 30 years. Able payment due over 30 years. And it loan starts from $10,000, it can go to up to $10 million. Up to $10 million loan can be given. And loan up to 200K, there is no need for any personal guarantee or collateral. Loan about $100,000, they need personal guarantee and the banks, the lender may ask for collateral as well. It's it's done through only SBA, no lenders, no private banks or SBA lenders do it. It's only through SBA. To apply for this loan, you should do, you should go on the website sba.gov and apply for that loan. Why? Because they're giving an advance payment of $10,000 for anybody, any business. And they're giving $10,000 today, means they can apply. And as per SBA guidelines, the money will be in their bank account in three days to five days' time from the date of application. Now, if your application gets rejected, then still you'll get the $10,000 and that $10,000 will be treated as a grant. You don't have to pay taxes on that $10,000 and it will not be included as income. So this EIDL loans, then the most important loans is which we are talking nowadays is paycheck production plan PPP. It's going to start from April 3rd for any business that has payroll. So with PPP loans, we have to really look into a couple of factors. Number one is the business should be in this, the the person should run a business and that business should have employees. So what about what about business that are not running in 2019? What happens to that business which just started in 2020? Or what happens to those business which are seasonal, like for example CPA services? For us, we are seasonal businesses, why? Because we we get lot of income during the tax season. So we are considered seasonal business, same thing, retailers who are considered seasonal businesses. Like Christmas time, they make the maximum sales, other times they are not. So seasonal businesses are rules are different. So in in case of business which are running, which are there in 2019, 2019, you have to look at the total payroll cost for that business. When you look at the total payroll cost for that business, we have to take out compensation for employee who are making more than $100,000. The amount for more than $100,000 not fully compassionate to that employee is only compassion above $100,000 means there's a cap for every employee up to $100,000. There is no distinction between first full time or part time, it's all any employee up to $100,000. We have to calculate that $100,000 up to $100,000. We have to take the total cost report for the 2019 and to minus out the payroll taxes, federal payroll taxes, not employee payroll taxes, federal employer portion, social security Medicaid taxes you have to take out. And then we take out any compassion paid to employee above $100,000, that amount should be taken out. You arrive at that yearly payroll and from that yearly payroll, you divide by 12, whatever average monthly payroll for that period 2019. And for average monthly payroll divided by multiple by 2.5 times. That is for the people who own a mall. How much loan they will get depends upon this. And federal credit unions.
So a couple of things.
Is there on the website, US Department of Treasury?
Sanjeev, if you, sorry, sorry, keep going, keep going, sorry.
Yes, so the website, on the website, there's an application form in Department of Treasury. I will suggest you to to print, to print it out and make this and put all the information on that application. Reason that when open, when this, the banks will start maybe tonight, you will sign, you will find a online link. Everything will be done online. There's nothing visiting to the branch. Don't start going to the bank branch tomorrow morning because they are sheltered at home already is there. So everything will be online. So just fill that form, just for the sake of getting ready. Tonight will be the day, maybe tonight or tomorrow morning, where you keep watching that those banks which you are associated with, that any link is there or they are active links or that nothing is provided. The banks are saying they are not, they are not ready. There's a lot of chaos and confusion. The guidelines are not very clear on this one. The SBA has not provided good guidance on this one, even the government has not provided. Treasury Secretary has not provided a lot of information on that clarity. So you might see the the system might crash or people applying, as many people as business owners will apply, 30 million businesses will apply for this kind of loan, but you still have to apply, you have to be in the queue. Whether 350 billion has been for this program, but it can go in in a year very quickly. So just be, just just have that, my advice will be have that application ready. Fill up that application. So it is, that's the amount of processing or they're looking at the average payroll for business in 2019. If the business not start in 2019, is there in 2020, they look at average payroll for January and February 2020. February 2020 and they take out the average payroll and 2.5 times. Now PPP is only for for employers less than 500 employees, more than 500 is not, is not allowed under this program. And then as good, the things to note about here is there's no collateral, no P payment required. There's no P and penalties, there's no collateral. And whatever money you, the loan gets sanctioned for, you have to use that money for paying payroll. Payroll includes basically insurance premium, retirement benefits. You have to man, you have to pay, use that money for payroll. You have to use that money for rent, provided you have existing agreement, rental agreement as on February 15th, 2020. You have that money should can be used for utilities, provided you have existing agreement or as on as on February 15th, 2020, it's not new, that's what they're saying. Any mortgage payment, not personal, mortgage payment should not be personal, like HELOC loan payment or primary loan payment, it is best, it is only for those mortgage payment where the building is part of your business. You own a building, it's shown on the, on the tax return schedule L is there, where the balance sheet shows that asset they are building and you're making the mortgage payments. So anything and everything related to those four sectors for business related expenses, if you use that money funds for those four things, then you can apply within a period of eight weeks from the date of origination. You have to understand that period, covered period, we call it eight weeks from the date of the origination of the loan for that purposes. Then you can apply to render for forgiveness. The lender can decide within 60 days, they will ask you a lot of documentation, like I said, rental agreement, lease payment and also payroll documentation. But in addition to payroll documentation, they can ask a few other things. We will cover in the in the comparison sheet, in the comparison, I in the last last I have that comparison between PPP and EIDL, where a lot of things will be clear. One more thing with this PP program is there is a lot of self-certification. So you're promising to the lender that initially, yes, you will initialize everything, but you will be prepared to provide documentation to the lender when they ask for it and a lot of certification in that respect. Loan forgiveness, that's the the thing you're looking at the sheet, at this one, how this calculated. Important thing about loan forgiveness is the money should be used within eight weeks after origination date. And they need to maintain the average number of employees. So when you apply for that, when you have the application, when you fill that application, there's this this line that says number of jobs. So that number of jobs should not go down during the eight week period. You have to maintain that number of jobs. And you have to maintain the total payroll cost for all the employees should not be, it should not, it should not be less than 25% of what is appearing before you apply for this one. So up to 25% is fine, but more than 25%, your forgiveness amount will be reduced. So these are the things they are looking for, the number, average number of employees should be more or less the same and the cost should not go down by more than 25% to get the loan forgiveness. And interest, like these are the areas of expenses, how the PPP loan will be used for. Now, when we do comparison between those two loans, which one we should use and which one we should not use. So in EIDL, economic injury disaster loan is for any business, planning homeowners. Homeowners can also apply. If your homeowners are looking, seeing loss in rental revenue, you can apply EIDL, but wait for the deal loss. If you just think that your tenant has given notice that they are not going to pay or they want differentment, doesn't mean you can go ahead and apply. Unless you really actually see a loss in revenue, then then you apply under EIDL. So it's, it can be for any business and payrolls is not required for for applying for EIDL. PPP is for business in existence as of February 15th, payroll is required for payment. For salaries, PPP can be used for salaries, rent, utilities, mortgage payments. EIDL can be used for any purposes. It is no, not only for salaries, rent, mortgage, it can be used for buying materials. It can be used for contractor payments. So it can be for any purpose. It's a working capital requirement. Whereas PPP are only used for salaries, rent, utilities and mortgage payments. Collateral and personal guarantees may be required if you have loan more than 200K and there is a personal guarantee in loan. For less than 200K, it is based on credit score, whereas PPP, it is based on payroll. Interest rate in EIDL is 3.75 fixed for 30 years with first installment due after one year, there's a differentment. After one year, this is due and this payment period is 30 years by interest accrued on differentment. Whereas in PPP, interest rate is fixed at 0.5% payable in two years with differentment of at least six months with interest accrued on the, in the differentment period. So these are a distinction, but I will suggest to all of you to apply in the EIDL because you get $10,000 right now with three to five days. You can, in the meantime, tomorrow morning, keep the application ready and tomorrow morning or in the night, wherever the the banks are ready. I don't know whether banks will be ready with this or the system will fail. I'm not sure, there are too many things happening there. But you should, one should be ready, get the application for PPP in and who, $10,000 will be coming early. It will take at least two to three weeks or more for any bank or SBA to process this EIDL or PPP. In case of EIDL, the agent will call you. In case we idle, the the information you're asking on EIDL is very limited. They're just asking for income for 2019, the cost of goods sold for 2019, number of employees. And then some questions like about the business, the address, the agent and you submit the button and you get $10,000 in three to five, three to five days and that that is forgiven. That if the loan is united, still you can give back $10,000. And that money is rolled over into, if you get PPP, that money is rolled over into PPP and then total forgiven forgiveness is determined based on the formula which I just told you. So now I'm, if you have any questions, yes.
So Sanjeev, the first question perhaps I can ask you. Is this going to be through the banks or is it going to be on the SBA website? What's, because there is still a lot of confusion because the banks have no idea apparently.
Yes, so EIDL is through SBA. Like I said, you can go today, tonight. And there's on the, when you go to sba.gov, on the first, on the first, on the page, it says on the top, it says apply for EIDL, go ahead and apply for it. For PPP, like I said, it's going to the banks, SBA is not giving, SBA is not doing it. So as they are given the authorization to the lenders to, so if you know your banker, if you know them, connect with them, like I said, everything will be online. So even the banker cannot help, just wait, I'll, I see some on Chase, I see on Fremont Bank and I see on certain other banks, they've created online, but it's not active as yet. Just keep looking, just keep looking on this one. Just keep looking on that, on that bank website and be ready, like I said, have the application filled up so that you are not late on finding the information. The information that they're looking for is just as average monthly payroll for the right now, fulfilling their application, later on they will ask for documentation.
Okay, so we, I see a few questions on the chat window. So let's start with Ashwin. Ashwin has a question on the payroll.
Oh, chat window, how to, I'm not a tax saving, so where is the chat window here?
So you'll see a blinking.
Oh, yeah, 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 sorry. Okay.
See the question, Ashwin, around you, you want to. Do you want to run? Do you want to run through your question?
Yeah, yeah, sure, hi, thanks Rishi for presenting yourself for the community. So the question is about ten ninety nine, so we are a, we are a services company. So we have employees on W two and then we have some contractors. So in that regard, the question is that for, to calculate the payroll cost for one year. Can we include the payments to contractors on ten ninety nine?
It's a very good question. So PPP is only for payroll, not for ten ninety nines. You can, if you have ten ninety nines, you can apply under EIDL. Because they include that, like I said, the income and cost of sold, cost of goods sold includes contractor payments and salaries and wages. So it can include, you can, you can tell, you can go under EIDL, you can ask your contractor. Because PPP is also for self-employed, self-employed compensation, self-employed income is stated as self-employment income subject to several taxes. So they can themselves apply under PPP. So anybody and everybody who has salary and income, self-employment income can apply for PPP.
Okay, but we as an employer, we are an S corporation. So we as an employer cannot request the payments, money for the payments that we have to make and the forgiveness on it, we cannot request that.
No, not for contractors, only for salaries to, like I said, the number of employees should be intact and the salaries should not decrease by fifty, twenty five percent.
Okay, what will be the exact date for this one, last twelve months of payroll to be given? That starts on April second twenty twenty to April three two for the nineteen or only two thousand nineteen?
So the, what we are doing for our client, we are taking for twenty nineteen for the whole year so that we have data. Because what, what wording says in the literature, it says twelve months prior to loan origination date. But we take it for the whole year twenty nineteen, which is much more better data than this current three months or nine months of last year.
And when lastly, when do we make a payment to the, once we get the loan, we make a payment, decide when period we select on our own or as a fixed period which we have to pay?
So loan forgiveness, you can apply after eight weeks and lender takes about sixty days to decide. In the meantime, like I said, like I said, there is a deferment of six, at least six months for the first payment. If it's not forgiven, so that period is there, after six months you can start paying it. And it's for two year term and point five percent is fixed and you can claim that interest whatever you have paid. If you are paying it as expense on your tax returns.
Okay, thank you.
So Sanjeev, you know, the, the key difference between the EIDL and the, the PPE option. It seems like ten thousand dollars is the max that can be waived with the EIDL, whereas it can be forgiven. But your, the, the loan forgiveness is, the upside is a little bit more with the other one, right?
Yes, he's upside more for the other one, but then they ask for a lot of documentation and. You can get more money in the ideal, like up to two hundred K. Without any collateral and without any personal guarantees. And the rate of interest is fixed of three point seven five percent is like boring at that rate, you can use it for any purpose. And payment term is thirty years.
Correct. Now, also I wanted to highlight the key difference between the two, which is, you know, if you are a payroll intensive company. Then that's when you go with the PPE, that, that option will work very well. But let's say you have a bunch of contractors or you have, you are inventory based company, then probably the, the. The, the first option will be.
EIDL, I would suggest apply both and see who comes, what comes for, because lenders will be taking their own time. It's not that they're going to give the money immediately, it takes about two to three weeks, like, like you rightly said, so much confusion is there. Banks don't even know, like is, is given to them, they don't even know what to do. So it will take time, everything will take time.
So the other question.
Hello, can you hear?
Yes, go ahead, who, who's speaking?
Hi, my, my name is, my name is Vidya, I just had a question with regard to the ten ninety nine that we just talked about. So I am a independent ten ninety nine contractor providing like, you know, accounting services, things like that. And for me to apply for the PPP, I'm not sure, is that eligible? Am I, and what do I, like, I don't have employees, I'm my own, I'm my own service provider, like I'm, I don't have employees. So what should I like spend it on?
Yes, so you can apply, so like I said in the presentation, anybody, any sole proprietor. Whose income, net income, so you have to look at your schedule C of a tax returns. So if you're making money, net income is there, net self-employment income is there, you're considered as a salaried person. And you can apply under PPP up to hundred thousand dollars. Anything, if you're making more than hundred thousand dollars, that, that extra amount will be disqualified. So like for any compensation paid to employee about hundred thousand, that excess amount will be disqualified. So in this same case, you're considered as employees for your business and you can apply under PPP. And the application for contractors is not tomorrow, the application for those contractors is on April tenth.
Oh, I see. So you said like if, if, for example, our earning is hundred and twenty K, then my average monthly is let's say ten K, right? So should I apply for the two point five times, which is twenty five thousand or should I still apply for the hundred K?
Oh, hundred thousand divided by twelve and then you arrive, arrive every monthly, every monthly compensation, that will be.
Oh, I see, and what can I spend it on? Because I don't have, like, it's my personal house that I use as home office, like partially.
Or you can take a drawing, you can take a drawing, drawing, like I said, drawing is part of profit. Profit drawings are taxable as self-employment income, so you can take the money and like you're running, if your income is hundred thousand.
Oh, like it's my salary?
Yes, it can be.
Oh, I see. So I can take that whatever twenty five K if I'm getting, I can take that as my salary because I should have earned that.
Yes, so it should be consistent, so let's say your schedule C to twenty nineteen tax return is hundred thousand. You divide by twelve, you get around nine thousand, some change per month, you multiply into two point five, they give a loan of let's say twenty seven thousand. Your withdrawal, the withdrawal should be, the drawing should not exceed, like it should not be expert, exorbitant, it can be, should be reasonable, let's say ten thousand dollars per month.
Oh, I see.
Twenty thousand will be forgiven.
And does it matter if I have another, if I find another client, let's say in May, like I don't have a job right now, but I find another client in May at the withdrawal time, does it matter?
No.
That I can't withdraw if I find another client? Okay, okay, got it.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to Lisa.
Thank you.
And we have a bunch of comments here. So feel free to put, put your question in the comment box, in the chat box. They'll run through the questions in sequence. And the ones on the phone will, will get you as soon as we are done with the, with the chat questions here. So Lisa, would you like to bring up?
Sure, thank you, Rishi. Sanjeev, I have two questions that I put in the chat box. My first one is regarding the EIDL. When someone, so when a person submit, makes a submission for the EIDL loan. And you also mark the checkbox for the ten thousand dollar grant. They, they indicate that it takes three days if it's approved for it to get to your bank account. Is the three days meaning once it's approved or when you submit your application?
Very good, it's once it approves, so you have to have a successful application done. So you make sure that you apply properly on the EIDL with the income and expenses properly done. And proper information should be filled up, it's like, when you, when you apply on EIDL, it's based on your credit score. So your, so it's asking for everything, so once they approve it, then the money should be there. Now it's treated as advance, so everybody will get it, whether they get the loan approval or not approval, they will get the ten thousand dollars. They are saying three days, but my client applied a few, few days back, like it's more than three days. So I know everything is slow now, so, but it's an advanced payment, money will be there shortly.
I see, okay, thank you for that. And then my second question is around the PPP. Where as a sole proprietor, I work from a home office, I have no employees. Should I consider a PPP, especially when, I'm curious about mortgage interest expense? Does that only apply if I have an actual business office outside of the home?
So you are a sole proprietor?
Yes.
So what type of, so you're doing some kind of business, I believe?
Correct, correct, so I'm doing. Oh, so I'm doing an organizing consul, I'm an organizing consultant and I work out of my home, out of a home office.
Yes, so like, like I said to, for earlier one, you can definitely self-employed people do constitute. As a self-pointed income, they have the self-employment taxes on, withheld on that one. So you're considered as a salaried employee for your business, so you can apply under PPP, yes. But the application date is not tomorrow, is, is on April tenth.
I thought a sole proprietor is April third, a self, because a self-employed is April tenth.
Yes, self-employed contractors, sole proprietor, all are April tenth.
Oh.
So sole proprietor, those proprietors, everything should apply, if you have employees, then it's April tenth. If you don't have employees, it's April tenth.
Oh, okay, okay. So then when they, they refer to mortgage interest expense being allowable, does that?
So, yeah, that's a very good, which wants to market interest, if you have a home office and it's separable home office from your personal users area. If you separate it out with, because the home office should be exclusively and, and a hundred percent used for business. If that is the case, you take a picture of that home office, you can demarket, you can take the square footage calculations. And definitely you can, you can claim all those, all those things related to that home office, you can claim the mortgage interest payment. But you can divide it and do a reasonable calculation as an expense for your business.
Okay, okay, and is, is the PPP forgivable or is that only the, or I guess not?
No, for eight weeks of payments for those rental home office expenses, yes. But lender will ask for documentation to prove it, it's based upon lender to forgive it. Again, it's not determined by the IRS and lender, remember this thing, lender will also issue. A kind of a tax document at the end of the year, like we have a cancellation of debt. If you recall, there is a forgive, foreclosures and happened and there's a cancellation that document is there. So I believe there will be some kind of tax document at the end of the year. And so IRS will be, so IRS has, the, the case status provided budget for the IRS, first time they got a budget for oversight and other things. So IRS will be monitoring this as well as the lender will be monitoring this.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Great, let's go to Kiran Batia, Kiran, you still around? Kiran, please unmute yourself and ask your question.
Yeah, hi, I'm here, I had a question on the EIDL. Can a person apply for EIDL even if they don't have an LLC or a business entity? Because it does ask on the application for a business name and the tax ID number. Can you apply without that?
No, like I said, I am a sole proprietor, so I can apply, I have a business with employees, so I can apply on PPP on tomorrow, for tomorrow, yes.
So which site is that, is, that's not EIDL then, right?
EIDL is on sba.gov website and PPP is administered through the SBA's approved lenders. And now the, the application is not online, the application is there, but the, the banks have not given that link to apply online. It will be coming very shortly, maybe tonight, maybe in the morning tomorrow. Like Rishi has told, when he started, he said this all lot of confusion, of course, there are a lot of confusion and chaos. Banks don't even know what's going, going to happen, but we should be in the first in the queue to apply. Because this is very short, short loan, which means there are a lot of, thirty million businesses will apply for this one, the money can go like anything. So we have to be in the queue.
Okay, so it can be as an individual without any tax ID or anything, right?
Tax ID is required for employees, so if you have a tax ID, that means you have employee. If you don't have a tax ID, that means you don't have employees, then your application date is April tenth.
Okay, so PPP, then I cannot apply before April tenth?
Yes, but you can apply under EIDL.
Okay. Then you can. EIDL is, the only difference is EIDL requires the LLC name or the business name.
No, no, you can put your name, like I said, I am a sole proprietor, I applied under EIDL, I will get ten thousand dollars within three days, two, five days. And I can apply under PPP, I have a business, but I can apply both. And while, if you get both, you have to, of course, use, it's rolled over. It's a refinancing term, you can use EIDL money to pay off PPP or you can vice versa, you can create the loan forgiveness. You cannot get both the benefit, but there's a refinancing term that we use in case of both the laws.
Okay, I think I still have a question because I did apply today on EIDL under an LLC name. But then I could not apply it as an individual name because those fields are required.
No, LLC name, don't apply LLC, apply under individual name. LLC, you can just, there's no requirement for a business to be only LLC or, like I said, I applied under my name, I'm not an LLC, I'm a sole proprietor.
Okay, so EIDL.
I did the same thing, I applied on the EIDL, there were two sections. So the first section said business name and all that and it said, it needs employee that tax ID or social security for the business. I put my own social security number and I put my own name. And then the next page again has the owner information and I did the same thing, like my name and my social security and it went through.
Yes, if we went through it, if we go through it, there's not a problem there.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that the same as the grant, grant and loan is the same?
No, no.
The EIDL loan and grant?
No, the grants are, the grants means they are not taxable event, means the money is forgone, forgiven by the lender. And it's not taxable as income to the borrower and loan is like you need to pay back with the terms and the conditions attached to it. So.
But that EIDL form that we applied, is that a grant or a loan, like I don't know?
The initial payment of ten thousand will be a grant, so you don't have to pay it back.
And that's automatic?
That's automatic. In fact, if you look at sba.gov, they have changed the, they have changed the, the name, they're saying EIDL like advanced payment of ten thousand dollars. So they want to give ten thousand dollars immediately to every business owner.
Thank you.
So Sanjeev, I have a question on the PPP. Would you please summarize as to, you know, given the fact that, let's say, tonight the banks will roll out the form on their website. And the folks on this call will be basically clicking on that and trying to fill that up. So while they are going through that, what information should everyone get ready in preparation for filling that particular form? You know, would you please summarize that?
Yes, so in applying, if you look at the PPP form application, so you go to the US Department Treasury. Under that, you can go to the link that says COVID nineteen support. And then they will go to the PPP and then there is a how to apply form. You, you look at that form, it's a fillable form, you don't have to print it out. If the fillable form, what it needs is, is a business name, DBA name, attorney, owner name. And address for the business, EI number, social security number. Then they ask for average monthly payroll. And average monthly payroll, like I said, if you are in existing business from last year, twenty nineteen, you will take the full year payroll, total cost of the payroll. From that total cost minus out the payroll tax for the year. Employer portion of payroll tax, not employee portion, employer portion of payroll taxes for the year. Minus out the compensation paid to an employee above hundred thousand dollars, minus that out. And the resulting figure will be the yearly payroll for our computation purposes. And that, that yearly figure you divide by twelve to arrive, to arrive at average monthly payroll. And that average monthly payroll times two point five, you have to put that amount on that, on that line, this is average monthly payroll. And then they will ask a number of jobs, that's also important, it's important to be honest on the application. Taking money from the government is, and trying to.
Come upstairs for a minute, quick.
Sorry?
Yeah, go ahead, sorry, Sanjeev, keep going.
Yeah, so average number of, average monthly payroll, then number of jobs, like I said, it should be honest, like taking money from the government is all. Should be a honest application, it should be authentic, authentic, no manipulation allowed. They, they can ask for documentation later on, so number of jobs should be the current scenario. What is number of jobs you have? What is number of jobs you have, number of employees working in, on, on them. It can be full time, it can be part time. So just put that number there, be careful on that number. And then the owner information is there, like who is the owner holding the controlling interest. You put the name of that person, the social security number. And then there's certain question answers about criminal intent and other things, which is very, like you find in any other forms. So we'll go ahead and answer those questions. And then there's a initialize, they initialize a lot of things. Like you are going to provide certification that, as a self-certification on there, like you, you're providing all the, you will provide all information for lender, they like four, five, zero, sixty tax return. They can ask for that, they can ask for any other documentation to validate under the, the things that you're putting on the application. Uh, so there, this, uh, you just initialize all those things and signature name. That's the two pager application, which one should be ready. And, uh, and when the online is there, just fill it up and consent it.
Good, that is very helpful. Let's go to Risha Srivastava. Risha.
Hi, Sanjeev. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, so one of the questions you just kind of touched upon, but I wanted to confirm. You said for the loan forgiveness for the PPP, it's important to list how many employees you have. And in some literature, actually, a lot of it, I've been seeing that it says number of full-time employees, but I just heard you say it's for full-time and part-time. Can you clarify on that?
Yeah, so they're not committed to definition of how many hours the part-time is qualified, is not qualified. So even if they're working, let's say, part-time employees are considered by different definition, less than twenty hours, more than twenty hours, less than twenty-five, more than twenty-five. So I will put, uh, if they're working for twenty-five hours or more, I'll put them as full-time.
I see, okay. Uh, the other question I had was on the EIDL grant portion of it. So I applied for the EIDL and one of the questions I had was if I don't really want the EIDL loan, which is not going to be forgivable, but I just want the grant, is that going to be an option for me or once you take the grant, you're committed to taking the loan as well?
Yes, you cannot just take the, uh, the advance of ten thousand dollars. Uh, they say it's part of the loan application processing. So you have to find where, when the SBA agent is going to call you. See, when we apply for that EIDL, initial payment advance will be given, but that application will be processed. Somebody from the SBA will going to call you and will ask you questions on those applications. That time you, you, you can find ways, you can say, I don't need it at this time. Uh, we are still waiting for the guidelines, but you can say that I don't need it. It'll, you say, okay, that's fine. Then they, they, they will, they will, your loan will be not approved, but you can still keep that ten thousand dollars. But if you apply under PPP and you get the, you get the, you, you get the loan on the PPP, uh, and the loan forgiveness will include the ten thousand dollars you got on the, this one.
Okay, you got it. Okay, makes sense. And then finally, I think you also touched upon this a little bit before, but I just wanted to confirm. So besides having an S corp and being a business owner, I, I'm also a homeowner, which is on, and my home is on rent. So I recently found out that my, the corporate rental company, they are coming back and they want to cancel the lease, obviously because they're affected as well. So I'm gonna have a loss of rental income now. So I've already applied, uh, for my business, for the S corp through the EIDL. Now it sounds like I can also, as a homeowner, still try and apply for the, the, the grant and try and, uh, show that it's a rental income loss. Is that right?
Yes, so I will hold on to that one. Right, the reason for that one is, uh, you can try your luck, there's nothing wrong in trying. But, uh, what, what is asking for, when there's a question that ask on the last one, right? So we should be careful, we should have actual loss rather than emotional loss. If they're cancelling and they really want to not paying, and you're sure they're not paying, then go ahead and do it. If they are just deferring it and, uh, when the economy improves or, let's say, the period goes over, this, uh, bad period goes over, uh, they start paying you back, then, uh, it's very difficult to substantiate it. So I will, it depends upon the negotiation and everything. If you really see it's, it's going to be lost totally, then go ahead and do it. If you still, uh, they want to, they want to negotiate and do the deferment, I'll wait on it till there's actual loss on.
Okay, but how would you calculate what the loss would be? So if they're cancelling the lease on you, so do you assume it's going to be a loss of basically the rest of the year? I mean, how do you, how do you assume what the loss will be until you're able to find the rent back?
Yes, a very good question. Like I said, it's based upon negotiation and it's based upon your contract value. Uh, the contract is how, for how many and you have the legal obligation also to honor the contract. So, uh, whatever is legal and, uh, justifiable.
Whatever was the lease term, so it was a two-year lease, it's the balance of the lease essentially with the, uh, loss of rent. Okay, that makes sense.
Any payment they are going to make for the lease breakage and other things, whatever.
Yeah, okay, got it, got it. All right, thank you so much.
Okay, next.
In that regard, I had one more question with respect to rent. Is it okay to ask now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so, uh, we, we, uh, we also have a, we purchased a home at the rental property. Um, just now and it closed right with, like during this whole coronavirus thing when it happened. And so we were going to put it for the rental in, at that time, but because of the whole shelter in state, uh, process and everything, we can't get any, we can't put it on the rental market and we can't get, we still, we'll be paying mortgage on it, but we cannot put it on the market. So there's no agreement right now. So am I eligible to do anything for that?
Again, so, so again, we have to be careful about national laws versus actual laws. Like I said, uh, of course, it's opportunity loss because now the, the property cannot be rented out.
Uh, yeah.
There's no guidelines as yet on that, on that from the IRS. But my, my thinking will be, it, this, this is an opportunity loss because your, your, the property is available for rent, but, but because of this pandemic, you're not able to rent it out. You can take a fair market value of the rent and you can apply under, also that, for a period you're not able to.
So would this be separate? I'm a, I'm a independent contractor on ten ninety-nine and I've applied for the EIDL and the PPP, let's say for loss of my business revenue, but I'm an independent contractor, I don't have employees. So can I apply? I can't apply again for the rental thing, right?
So Sanjeev, let's pause this one. Sanjeev, I'm sorry, let's pause this one because there are lots of other questions that are in the pipeline. Uh, let's go to Yash and let's run through the questions on the chat window. So Vidya, if you don't mind just waiting, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll get to you towards the tail end of this. Okay, let's go to Yash. Yash, can you please unmute yourself?
Uh, hi.
Yes. Hi, good evening. Good question. Like, can someone apply for unemployment and PPP both?
Oh, no, 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 no. Unemployment is totally different ballgame, okay? A different ballgame. Unemployment is like you're taking the benefit from federal understate. Uh, so you can't take the loan from the government. Uh, so it's only for, for business owners who have, who have loss of business revenue.
Okay.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I'm his spouse and I also wanted a question. Um, and we both are doing a business. So can we both apply separately on EIDL or?
Oh, you have different businesses or you have businesses where both are linked together, means fifty-fifty, it's a commodity property. So how is the, is it different altogether? Nature of business are different, licensing are different or it's like entwining into one, one another?
It's one.
It's one. So yes, I, I would suggest that if a, if a, if a active business, uh, if it employs, then definitely you can apply under both. If there's no employees, then you can apply under the EIDL.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, and then Juan Gonzalez had a question, whether this presentation will be shared. And we will, uh, Sanjeev, if you don't mind, uh, putting the presentation online, I can send it to the folks who have RSVP for this. Okay, go to, uh.
I just have another question, Rishi.
Yes.
Um, basically the, is the information on the website going to be available in the presentation? Because I mean, it's the first person, I don't know that, I mean, those details, how to apply and what website to use.
Uh, which website for, which one? For, uh, for, uh, PPP, again, the PP application is on, but the, the banks have not been able to do, to put it online. So PPP is only go, is only done through the SBA approved lenders, not through SBA.
Okay.
So the banks will be putting shortly, they have been under tremendous pressure from the government. Uh, but they are not understood the guidelines. There's a lot of chaos there. But again, what, what I'm hearing is it will be online, whether in the night or in the morning tomorrow, we don't know yet. But just keep checking that website of your bank and just be the first person to queue.
Okay, perfect. So it will be tomorrow then. Thank you very much, Sanjeev.
Okay, we'll, just we'll table Kiran. Let's go to Vishal. Vishal Anand, you have a question on PPP? Vishal, could you please unmute yourself? Hi, Vishal. Okay, so the question is if PPP is granted, is the business obligated to pay payroll for the next eight weeks, even if the county and state keep the shelter in place order, which forces a business to stay closed?
That's a good question. Uh, definitely eight weeks will be from a date, the, the office is open. It cannot be from a date, uh, let me see, it can wait from a date, uh, uh, from a date of, it says from the date of ordination, but of, of course, the office has to be open. But if it's a business that you can work virtually from home and you can, you want, you don't want to lay off the employees, after the loan is sanctioned, you have to keep going, whether they work from home or somewhere. Uh, uh, office, you have to maintain that payroll. Like I said, it's number of employees and the payroll cost is a determining factor for forgiveness of the law.
Okay, so any follow-up to that? Vishal, do you have any follow-up? Okay, let's go to Tracy.
So, uh, there's a follow-up for forgiveness. Does it include the, uh, owner, employees of S corporation?
Yes, yes. It includes any payroll paid to owners. There's no distinction between owners and non-owners. Just make sure that you're not using this fund for paying yourself a hefty payroll. Don't do that. It has to be reasonable. Like I said, there's a lot of oversight with IRS and everybody, everything lenders also will look into it. So, uh, yes, of course, if you're running payroll, uh, you have been running payroll since, uh, January and you have been paying yourself payroll. Continue doing that. Don't increase the, don't try to pay bonuses and other things. Uh, yes, you can include your payrolls.
Okay, Tracy, uh, would you like to unmute and ask your question?
Yes, uh, my question is from the PPP form. The question number seven is asking if I'm a US citizen or PR. So my name is a small business, hundred percent owned by a foreign company. So do I qualify for that?
Answer is no. Uh, only, only person, owner who is a, who is a US citizen or green card holder or have a valid social security number.
Um, but the company actually has, i- is a California corporation, but it's just hundred percent owned by the foreign company.
A hundred percent, but that foreign company is not a valid entity as per the, uh, for the loans forgiveness. So it, it can't basically apply under both because they will find out it's a foreign entity. But again, the guidelines are not clear in that one. You can try, uh, you can try to apply. If, if the loan agent calls you, you can explain the situation. They can ask for documentation like tax returns and other things, other, uh, certification from the borrowers, from the owner. If you can provide those things, it will, it will be granted.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's go to Rishi Adav, who's got a question on PPP. Rishi is still on. Uh, the question is, uh, is, uh, PPP forgiven portion of the loan, is that taxable? If you are forgiven a PPP, will they tax you on that?
No, there's no taxable event, uh, like to, that's, that's, that's the best part of it. But like I said, you have to have a proper documentation for the loan used, usage of loans. Uh, like I said, uh, lenders might, uh, they, they will give you a tax document end of the year, like a cancellation of debt. And, uh, uh, IRS will look into it. There will be a lot of oversight by IRS, like, like audits or, or, uh, doing a cross-pronounce audit and looking for documentation just to make sure that the loan has been used in a proper manner as provided by the government.
Okay, excellent. And then we had Ashwin who's asking, do you have to apply PPP in your own bank? And I presume the answer is yes, Sanjeev?
Yes, online. Everything is online. No, what, nobody visiting the branch is not allowed to visit the branch.
The question is, do we apply it in, in our own bank or we can apply it to any bank?
Any bank.
Any bank.
Any bank. It can be any non-account, account bank, but it's better always to apply where your account is maintained because relationship is matters. And, uh, the banks will be more flexible in the, because you have to understand at the end, you have to submit document to the lender. Uh, so if the lender knows you very well, they can be leaning in some way, here and there.
So that's the preferable option then. Good.
Yes, other options, yes.
Okay, let's go to Kiran. Kiran, you still there? Please unmute yourself and ask your question about unemployment insurance. So Kiran is asking, can, can self-employed apply for unemployment issue, insurance?
Yes, first time, first time in the, in the history of the, of the US, I see that unemployment is there provisions for self-employed individuals. So CARES Act to take care of the self-employed individual. Uh, uh, so you can take unemployment, uh, you can apply. They have not provided how to apply, but, uh, we are waiting for the guidelines.
Excellent. And that brings us to Vidya. Vidya, are you still there? Hi, Vidya.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Sorry to keep you waiting.
Yes, yeah, so. No worries. So I, I think, uh, a lot of my questions have been answered, but, uh, the rental, uh, I know we were talking about the rental income loss without a contract because we weren't able to rent it out. Is there any provision for that?
Uh, like I said, uh, you have to calculate, uh, well, as per the guidelines, what we have right now, national rent is not, national loss is not allowed. But still, since the situation is such like this, nobody has experienced like this kind of situation. So you can take a fair value of the rent, which is there, which exists. If the, is, uh, is available for rent but not rented because of the conditions and you take a fair value of the, the rent, which is, uh, in your area, you can document that one, then you can claim that as a loss during this period.
I see. And is that separate from like, uh, like my, my, my ten ninety-nine I have? But then I filed with my husband for, uh, rental, uh, income as a passive income, right? So is that?
Yeah, so if there's a passive income, uh, the renters, the, it's a good, it's a good point there. So if the, the homeowners or renters should be actively participating in it. So it's, it's not for passive. So that should be a main source of income. If you're ten ninety-nine and this is just a passive activity, obviously there's not to apply for a passive activity.
Got it. Okay. And, and will there be more like tax, like audit? Because we took this, like, when we've not been audited, but because we took this loan, we can expect a tax audit, is that how?
Don't worry, we, we always tell what line, don't worry about audits because if you have documentation, if you use in the right manner, it's not, not, they, they can ask questions, they can ask you for documentation. Lenders will be more asking questions. Like nowadays, if you go for finance, refinance, they ask so many questions. So, uh, they can ask you a lot of documentation, but yeah, don't worry about audits.
Got it. Thank you.
So Ashwin has a question. You know, what he's saying is that Chase will most likely not be able to start accepting applications. And I presume this is for the PPP on, on, uh, tomorrow. So what he's saying is they are not ready. So the question is, Sanjeev, if a bank is not ready and if someone is not able to file application, what about the funding? The funding is probably limited and what happens if you file late? So any insights on that?
Uh, well, if the funding is not there, then we are unlucky. That's why it's on first come, first served basis and it's capped at ten billion dollars. So actually fifty billion dollars. So, uh, that's unlucky part. The bank should be ready. If Chase is not ready, I think no other bank can be ready.
Oh, really? So, so, but the question still remains like, so if Chase is not ready, then you have to go to some other, uh, bank, right? I mean, uh.
Yeah, you can try someone, any, any bank you can try, like Wells Fargo is a preferred lender. Uh, uh, like Union Bank, uh, is this Bank of West is a preferred lender. Uh, Citibank is a preferred lender. US Bank is very good. US is a, like, already, already very, very active, US Bank. Uh, you can try US Bank, Fremont Bank for in our area is very active. Maybe local banks in your area, if it's a preferred lender, you can find out. And, uh, they can be, yeah.
And I do understand that for the PPP, if it is a venture-backed company, uh, venture-backed startup, then these rules may not apply to them because the venture has, uh, the, the, it's more than five hundred people. So the, the, some of the rules that are on PPP may not apply in that scenario. I don't think so. We have anybody who's concerned with this. And, but I, I think it'll be useful because we, we, we'll, uh, take this video and it'll be uploaded and a lot of people will be watching. So do you want to address that, Sanjeev?
Yes, so startup companies, it's not based upon the nature of the business, it's based upon any businesses which are in operation and having employees for PPP. And having less than five hundred people. If it's more than five hundred, then this program does not apply at all.
Correct. So if a venture-backed company, then the number of people becomes greater than five hundred and that's the reason why PPP may not be applicable.
Yes, but they can apply under EIDL. There is, there is no limitation there.
Correct, yes. So, so now that brings me to the part B of my question, which is with PPP, three hundred and seventy-seven billion is the total limit. But what I've also heard is that it can potentially stretch. Have you heard anything like that, where in case somebody?
Yeah, I've heard that they're going, going to work on it. But again, that's, that's something which I'm not, I don't, I know, I know, question like, I have no insight into that for right now. But yes, I've heard about it. Let's put a, let's, let's see whether we can apply, go, go ahead and apply first for this one.
Correct. That brings me to one more aspect with respect to enterprise, which are created, let's say greater than 500 be a company, 500 people in the company. So they can defer 7.6 to 5% of the employer, employer portion of the payroll tax. So can you please elaborate a little bit on that?
Yes, that's a good, very, that's an important point here. So if you don't get forgiveness on the loan, you get the loan, but you don't get the forgiveness or you are not qualified, like in your case, you have like, the employer is more than 500 workers can't apply under PPP or this one. So if that is a scenario, then definitely they can retain, they can, the payroll portion, the employer's portion of the payroll tax is also good in Medicare. They can defer it and deferment like is base is, is payable 50% by 2021, 50% by 2022 year end. So 50% by year end 2021 and 50% by year end 2022. That's one. Second is about the employer retention, employee retention credit up to $5,000 up to each employee. You can get, you can get on that one. So that's also guidelines are being awaited from the IRS. There is not even much guidelines, but that is also there in the CARES Act.
And so the details for this would be provided by the payroll company, right? So we, nobody has to worry about it, but the payroll company.
Nobody has to worry about it. But it's, it's a very, it's a very easy calculation. Employer portion is, for social security, is around 4.2%, 4.6%, 2%. And Medicare is 1.45% to 7.65% of the payroll. Of course, there's a wage base up to 130,000, but then you can calculate also. But payroll company do provide, can provide those information. But they will charge a fee. That's the only, only thing.
Correct, yes. Okay, so now one more question about the, you know, following employees for four months, providing them healthcare and then bringing them back. Can you please provide some insights on that?
So following is a temporary leave absence. Definitely they can do that. They can apply for unemployment, state and federal. State is, EIDL is getting into 40 to 45% of the wage, wage or payroll, up to maximum $450 per week. And federal is adding on $600 per week for such, such a unemployed person up to a period of four months. And so 1050, 1050 is the maximum amount they can get per week up to, up to four months. Now with the family first coronavirus leaf act, they have extended up to 39 weeks divided. So EIDL is providing unemployment up to 26 weeks. Here's this act, CARES Act has extended it by, by recent 13, 13 weeks. So it's total of 39 weeks, they can get the, the California minimum wage, $450 per week. And federal will provide $600 up to period of four months.
And yeah, so I think you are able to double dip essentially, you know, from, from the new.
Yes, yes.
And that's really good news. So I did want to provide to our, our folks here that we have a newsletter. So the link is here at the very bottom. You can see the screen. It's tinyurl.com/RishiNewsCovid19. And this is a coronavirus newsletter, which has lots of information. And you can see that there is a small business section. It will be populating many of these things in there. And you should be able to get access to this along with some of the other components as well. Like the FAQ from Santa Clara County, it's there. So it's basically a one, one stop shop where you can get some of the latest information about coronavirus and the impacts and all the other opportunity areas. So are there any other questions that we can? Oh, by the way, you know, I, I did want to talk a little, little bit about the neighborhood pandemic preparedness team. So this team is out there essentially helping neighbors. And we started this effort of neighbors helping neighbors and built upon the premise of a neighborhood watch program. But what we have also done is we have created this landing page, which provides you lots of important information about coronavirus at rishikumar.com/coronavirus. And what we are also doing is just like this webinar we did today, a small business webinar, we, we did that. We are conducting lots of webinars like these. We ran the healthcare webinars. In fact, the healthcare, we have already run like four webinars over the last couple of weeks. And we are also running daily podcast. And what we are doing is we are building these masks. And if you see, if any one of you would like to get involved with providing our, the, the first line on the battlefield, our healthcare workers that are out there trying to protect us. But if you are able to help out in building mask, if you have stitching skills, we today dropped off 1,000, 1,055 to be precise. We dropped off these masks at the Valley Medical Center. And so we would love to get, collaborate and see how we can address some of the challenges that are currently ongoing. Are there any, any other questions that anyone has before we wrap up this call? We went a little bit over. It was actually very good discussion. There's a question, I believe.
Hello, sir. This is, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Rishi. I'd like to start out by saying I'm an independent voter and you got my vote. And you're a very knowledgeable person and I, you obviously care. And I just wanted to let you know that. My question is, okay, so I'm going to break it down fast. I know everyone's ready to go. So I started a business and ironically, it ends, I, my first day was that I opened the business was tomorrow. And so I had nine months and I had two employees during those nine months. I made 42K. I, I'm a contractor for, you might be familiar with Hexagon.
Yeah.
So I'm a, I'm a private contractor for them and I made 43K. And I only paid out 5,000, but the business was picking up. Hello?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I didn't, I lost your vid, video, but okay. So the business, but so I, and then of that, of course, the first year I had a lot of expenses that wouldn't have, like a vehicle and computer and that kind of thing that I wrote off. So I, and then, you know, you can write off the rent, phone, internet. So I really, I, I cleared and what I was, I'm not really, the, the thing is, this is my first year, so I'm not really familiar with the terms. But anyways, so, but then, and, and it was starting to pick up and get better. And so in the first three months of this year, so I pay my employees monthly. My two employees, they only averaged 560 for the first nine months. But in the, the three months of this year, I made 19K and I paid out 6K. So that averaged three, 2,000 per, per month that I paid out as an average for January through March. So I'm asking, should I do EIDL? Should I just file for unemployment as a contractor? Or should I try the other one, the PPP?
Okay, so, yeah, so answering for, for your question will depend upon the contract. Are you, are you having a consistent contract which is going to go on till the end of the year? Or you're not sure what will be the contract?
There's no contract. I just, there's no contract with me and Hexagon. There's only, it's only, I just get, I just, like I said, I'm not real familiar with the terms. But what I have in my hand is a 1099 from Hexagon stating that I made 43K. And I only paid out 5,000, but along the first three months of the, of this year, I made, already made almost 20,000. And I already paid my employees 6,000 and I went from two employees to four employees. But I'm making, I'm, I'm out there doing the work with them. So, and, but I didn't put myself on the payroll. I'm, you know. And so I just, you know, I just, I'm, you know, I don't know. Go ahead.
So answer, Matt, to answer to, answering to a question, so is the, what is happening is in, under both these programs, EIDL and PPP, is meant for future taking care of your business for future needs based upon the historical data. That's what it's the, the, it comes to summarization. So now if you, if you, if you are in the future, if you think you're going to get a contract, you are not a contract. You're going to get the work and you're going to get payment. Getting the payment now. And you need to hire people for this kind of, hire people to get this going.
Yeah, just, just backtrack about 30 seconds because you were breaking up, Sanjeev.
Okay, so I just wanted to, so if, if you think your business, if you, like, like I said, the PP program and EIDL is called future business, trying to take care of your future business need, trying to hire people and that all this in the, for the future based on historical data. Now, if you think you're not going to, you're, if you think you're in the future, like you, in the first two months of, of, let's say April, May, if you look into the future and you think that you're going to get the work from the company and you're going to hire people for that. Or doing that work, then you can.
Because my job requires normal traffic hours and normal traffic. And I don't know when normal traffic will, you know, be in effect. So I know that it will be at least till through the summer and through July, I bet I won't get another one, not even one job.
Okay, so then in that case, since it looks like you're not getting any kind of contract. So it's important for you to apply for employment like a, employment under the federal CARES Act. So we are still waiting for the, that is going to work out from the federal. They have given any guidelines on the self-employment, not even Department of Labor has provided guidelines. Once the guidance comes, you can apply for unemployment, not apply under EIDL or PPP. Because those, those programs are based for future business need, hiring people, getting working capital requirement done. So all those things are not what you're looking for. You're looking for to sustain your livelihood for this next, until you get those jobs from those, from your company. So it's better that you apply under the federal unemployment regulations.
So you're saying to the UI, because you broke up there, but I think I got the gist of it. You're saying I should just apply for contractor unemployment insurance now, since they're allowing that?
Yes.
So I can't pay my employees then? There, you're saying it's not a good idea. Not that much.
So now let me ask you this. So you want to retain the employee, whether you get the job or not?
I want, I can hear you. You're slightly breaking up. I, what I need, what I would like to do is keep the company afloat until things go back to normal. Because my work is based on traffic and we do traffic counts and studies. And we're, we're traffic analysis. And I go out there and work with my employees and do the counts. So it'll probably pick back up once this is all over, once, but it has to be normal traffic and peak hour traffic, that kind of thing. They won't give me any jobs until it's back to normal.
What I'm hearing, yeah, what I'm hearing is you still have to maintain your business expenses, like keeping those employees going. That's what you're saying, right?
I, I would like, yeah, otherwise I may lose them. And it's really important because they've been doing it for 15 years. I took over the company. I've been doing it for 10, but my boss just gave me the, the company because he got a, you know, a tech job and a new, new child. So he just gave it to me so that we, I keep his employees afloat.
Okay. So let's say you forget about these two programs. Will you be able, will you be paying them from your own pocket? Let's say you don't have any money coming from these sources. You will be paying from your pocket, pocket and you're going to run payroll for them, right? Or you're paying them 1099s? You're paying checks to them without running payroll?
I'm paying them. They're, they're, no, they're, they got W2.
They have W2. So then you can apply on the PPP because you are going to retain the employees. You are going to pay the payroll to the employees and that's, that's what PPP is all about for future employment of the, maintaining that future, maintaining the future employment and hiring those people and paying them. So that's what the money will help, help you out in paying those when the money is not coming from your job.
Yeah, since I'm, I'm one of the, yes, I didn't put myself on the payroll, but I'm one of the workers. I mean, I go out there and work. And so that's why, and I, I do as much as I can and do the many jobs as I can.
Yeah, so it will be a drawing for you. You can take out a drawing, like I said, in earlier, one of the, one of the person who talked about the drawings. You can take a drawing, reasonable drawing, maybe 4,000, 5,000, 6,000, whatever reasonable, you think your schedule C looks like a reasonable X. It's based on reasonableness. So you can take a drawing and that can be counted as, as a salary to you. Okay?
Because I make about as much as my, all four of my employees, you know, but.
So just pay yourself, yes, then you can do under PPP. Go under that.
Oh, can I? It's too late to put myself on the payroll though, right? Because I never did.
You don't, sole proprietor does not need a payroll. Is a payroll is taken out.
It's an LLC.
Oh, it's a multi-member or single member?
Single, I'm the only owner LLC. And then they have, and I, they sent me a contractor, non-employee compensation of 43,000 from last year. But it was, like I said, it was 20K in the first three months of this year.
Yeah, single member LLC does not change the nature. For tax purposes, they are disregarded entity. That means the single member LLC will be counted as Schedule C as a sole proprietor. And you don't need to run payroll for single member, even in case of single member LLC. So you can just continue, you can apply under PPP and you can take a drawings as your expense, like reasonable drawings. And, and for payroll to your employees, they keep continuing doing that. And you can get a forgiven of the loan if you continue doing that for at least eight weeks from the date of origination of the loan.
So you're saying that my, that what you call it a drawing, that, that will, that be Vermont for me? That would be not, that would be forgiven? Like no, no payment on that?
Yes, yes. Reasonable payment, reasonable.
One more thing, number of, number of jobs, what is, I don't understand how to fill that in. If I have zero jobs coming in, that means zero?
No, no, number, no, number of jobs, not the income jobs, a job from where the income is going to come. Number of jobs will be based on how many employees you have on the current scenario.
So I have four employees. So would I put four or five for myself?
Four, five is yourself only. You don't have to run payroll. So four.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Rishi.
Absolutely, yeah. Any, any final questions from anybody? I see Ashwin had a question.
I had a question that me and my spouse, we have a different Schedule C. So we can both apply separately on EIDL?
So having separate Schedule C, it doesn't mean that you can apply separate, have to have a separate businesses. So do you have a separate businesses?
The businesses, no, the business is like part of it, he does, where he handles the calls and the scheduling and the pay, and the payroll. And then the, you know, the economic part of it. And I go out and do the business itself, the work.
You're just, as a community property, you're splitting the income into two parts, right? Schedule C for tax purposes.
Yeah.
No, no, that's a one business will be counted and you have to put it as one business. Okay?
One business. And then in, in the EIDL form, I will put him as another owner of the business or?
You can put what whoever is the like 50/50 community property is 50/50 percent who, you can put either name, not a problem.
Okay. Okay, just one, one person's name.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so Rishi, sorry, this is Ashwin. The last question that I had was in one of the forms, they were asking. So they asked for the revenue for 2019 and then they asked for the cost of goods. So I have a services company. So we are just thinking the payrolls. There are no goods as such. So we put zero there or we put the, the famous, the employees and the goods?
Yeah, cost of goods sold in, varies, the definition varies in nature, depending upon the nature of business. In case of IT service, IT company or services company, the payroll is important, cost of goods sold. So you have to put that number there. If you have contractors in your businesses and that contractors are important for getting your revenue, that is also included in that line. Okay?
Okay, so part of good can include the pay base to the employees and contractors. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
All right, looks like that was the last.
Thanks, thanks very much, Rishi. I think I really want to appreciate, I know that everybody is there. But greatly appreciate you running this twice yesterday and today. Thanks very much.
Absolutely. Happy to. And Sanjeev, I really appreciate you spending time with us. This was a last minute thing. You accepted my call and you are here today and we are having a really good discussion. So I'm very thankful to Sanjeev and to all of you for joining in today. And it was, we'll take this video, we'll upload it to YouTube, we'll share it with a lot of people. So this will hopefully. So this will hopefully provide insights to many, many more than just the ones who are on this call today. So thank you, everybody. Have a great night. Enjoy.
Thank you, Rishi, and thank you, everyone. And I really want people to go forward and apply. Don't delay. Uh, even if it's confusing, don't delay because you want the money in your, in your bank account to take care of your business.
Sanjeev, what's the best way people can reach you if they are trying to reach you? Would you like to share a phone number or an email?
Yeah, I can, my cell phone number is, is six five zero seven nine nine five two nine four, six five zero seven nine nine five two nine four. You can text me and I'm there and I will, uh, respond to the text.
Okay, just to repeat again, uh, Sanjeev's, uh, cell phone number is six five zero seven nine nine five two nine four. So feel free to text Sanjeev, uh, until you get the application done. Sanjeev is a good guy. So thank you again, everybody. Enjoy the rest of the evening.
Thank you, Sanjeev, and thank you, Rishi.
You guys are really awesome. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, everybody. We'll terminate the Zoom session. Thank you. Bye.